Okay, I have a first by Mr. Lawrence, second by Mr. Guines. All in favor? Six to zero.
To the policy agenda for substituting item 4B, ordinance to amend section 1612 pertaining to the purchase of a firearm by retired officers and next of kin for officers killed in the line of duty. To the consent agenda, we're substituting 5E, resolution to authorize the lowest and best quote received from one water fountain for installation at Pennzoil Park. Substituting 5H, resolution authorizing entry into an agreement with MDA for Pops Ferry extension and adding 5M, resolution to authorize the one source purchase of tools from GNW Diesel on the amount of eighty-seven thousand, one hundred and forty-eight dollars and forty cents.
I'm over the agenda at the minute with a water fountain.
Have a first by Mr. Lawrence, second by Mr. Guines, all in favor? Six to zero. Now move to our presentation agenda. Mayor's report?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to welcome everyone to another July meeting, nice and warm today. And that pretty much concludes my report. Thank you.
All right, I don't think we have any departmental reports, so we'll move to council reports. We'll start with Mr. Lawrence. You have thirty seconds.
A couple big ones, yeah. What a water fountain. On the sand beach, did you get a chance to go down and look at that?
No, I didn't. We expected some crew that both are Parks and Recreation out, and I was inspecting, but didn't get it to the beach side. But we will, and I think the Sand Beach Authority needs to understand what the problem is as far as the washing. And I think you see a lot of pebbles in rocks along the beach shore from Porter Avenue to Holy Land, I think.
Yeah, Fox, yeah.
We'll take a look at it this afternoon.
And we getting an update on the Miramar Park equipment, playground equipment? Did we get that approved yet, or we get the bids in?
I'm not sure what equipment you're talking about, but I think, I'm not aware of any additional pieces of equipment either. I know the overhang and the fence and everything has been updated, but I'll check into that. I'm not aware which.
Yeah, but one of the piece of equipment has been breaking up, and they need to replace that one for sure, you know, but you all need to check that out.
All right.
And on Highway, I got a call back before I came to the meeting, they have grass growing out of sidewalks around the bulk building in three or four different places. So we just wanted to get that cleaned up. I know that's something we're working on, but I mean, that's gotta be.
We started from Porter Avenue along Highway 90, again, not on nickel, but we did it all the way to the Boe伐age, is that right, Dan? And we had, what, twelve people working today? We're gonna continue all the way to the point, doing the things that needed to be done, even though, again, not around nickel. But, you know, we're looking at some things to keep to suppress the grass from going through and the pump, trees screwing through out their gutters and so forth, but we're in the middle of that right now.
Well, that's a good way to spin our nickels, keep everything clean.
Yep.
And last thing, we were following that the Yules cutting, and when they fix that up, that's a nice park, that Causeway Park. So I mean, when they finished the building, fixed up the bridges, fixed up the boat ramp, and they thought about trying to get some money to expand, put like a deck out there. I think that's all good thing that's going on, you know? So that's, that could be a hotspot right there that you, that's a nice place, it's kind of small, but it's a good one. Anyway, that's my report, thank you.
All right, so we're gonna take that off of your time next week since you went over thirty seconds.
All right. Hey, well, I'll be here, you can book that.
Mr. Guines?
All right, man, short and sweet, I just need to see Christie after the meeting, give me an update on the community center, and let everybody know my mother's having her ninety-second birthday, it's today. So, happy birthday, mama. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Guines. Ms. Newman?
I've been reluctant to say anything for years now, but, because I didn't want to put the blame on any one person. But obviously, there's a storm on social media right now about Hiller Park, and so I feel like I have no choice but to address it. When I first got elected, the old administration told me that they were not gonna be putting any money towards Hiller Park whatsoever, that it was just done for, basically. So I said, okay, no problem. I formed the Friends of Hiller Park, we held monthly events on my own time, my own dime, most of it was put into all these events. We nickel and dimed people trying to fundraise to give back to this park. Successfully, we were able to get two new playgrounds, thankfully with Fofos help later on. We got a splash pad, thankfully with Beverly Martin's help. We got new LED lighting throughout the park, thanks to Mississippi Power. We were able to resurface the basketball courts and things like that. So it's very disheartening, because I've opened my own business and things happened with COVID, I had to end up working double shifts seven days a week. And no, that's not Hiller Park's problem, but, you know, the city, it's a city park, and to see that all of our hard work has just literally gone to ruins, it's very disheartening. And of course, it does reflect on me and my team, and so it's just disheartening, and it's getting worse and worse, and I, especially since it's budget time, I would like to see what we can do about sprucing up the park, at least back to where we had it. That's it, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Newman, Mr. Demming.
I apologize for running late, Chief. I don't know if, just out of curiosity, there was a train at a dead stop which blocked all of the, all of the roads that run perpendicular to the railroad on the west side of Biloxi. I don't know if anyone in here knows, but I was hit by a train when I was younger. Is there a reason why, do you know if there was any, anything like that that was causing that train to stop? Thank God, that's much better. What's that? I got you. All right, thank you, Chief, I just wanted to, just my own curiosity because of what I went through as a, as a young man, I don't really have much of a report. Mr. Mayor, I want to talk to you about a couple of projects. We're writing Parks and Recs, and I don't see Ms. Bell here, so I'll get with you afterwards. Okay, yeah, I'll grab you afterwards.
All right, thank you. Mr. Tisdale?
Yeah, a couple, couple of things. Somebody gone to the Pops Ferry Dog Park and said that only three lights are working out there, and I don't know, maybe if we get another light up on a pole working, folks would be happy. I don't know, I'm not out that way at night, so I don't know what you can see or can't see. In a, in a dog park, I'm thinking you might want to be able to see where you, I'll just leave it there. Also, the special events related ordinances, there were like five or six of them, and we had a couple of workshops. Do we need to schedule another workshop on that? I know that some of the organizations, I think, were still speaking with Mr. Abay, they were working out some language, so maybe to see where we are, and at some point, maybe vote, vote on these and see what we can get approved, because then we've got to start putting the word out for folks who are looking to have events here. So maybe we want to set a date for another workshop, it's just a thought. That's all, that concludes my report, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Glavine?
Thank you, Mr. President. I got a few things, I want to lead with talking about Lieutenant Governor from Louisiana, Billy Nungeser, visited the coast this weekend, and yesterday, he was at a business meeting, Fofos was there, Councilman Guines was there, and had a real spirited conversation, and he pledged his support, first and foremost, for the spillways and how they're affecting the Mississippi Sound, the Gulf of Mexico. He also talked about our local fishermen and the price of shrimp and seafood and what we can do. And he further expounded on how we don't have enough inspectors to inspect these imports that come in, and when they do inspect them, there's a high degree of bacteria and things that can harm the human immune system, and if we had more inspectors to inspect it, that the foreign shrimp, it would probably disallow a lot of those coming into our market, therefore opening up the markets for our local shumpers to be able to sell their shrimp at a fair price, at a higher price, so they could make a profit and a living. I've asked him, he said he had all the lieutenant governors sign off on a, on a resolution asking Washington DC to support a measure to add more inspectors. I've asked him to forward that, and perhaps we could look at it and just do a courtesy resolution saying that we support the same. Just kind of following up with Destiny Plantation, I know we've had a lot of rain, we've talked about that project over there, it's not a big project in Destiny, but I did visit with the two property owners that live along where that drainage ditch is, and assured them we're aware of it, we just need a way to conditions dry up a little, a little more for us to be able to get some equipment in there, but I just wanted to mention it today. I had a visit, and I told Mr. Myers, he lives off of Mason Road, and I had a visit with him, he said he got a notice from the city to clean up his yard, he's doing the best he can, his wife's in her seventies, he's just now recovering from chemotherapy and cancer that he went through. I did contact someone with our esteemed Mr. Ladner in the back, and we're gonna try to haul off some of his junk metal or whatever, and try to help and assist that family to clean them up. But I did assure him if the notice does get here, Mr. Creel, if he's, if they're making progress, we're gonna work with them and, and give them time and not work out, she was working out in a hundred and ten degree heat index, trying to clean her property off, and I told her we'd give them time, don't, don't knock yourself out, you know, we'll do it in, in the right way. Just a couple more things. The Mississippi Hotel and Lodging Association is having a meeting tomorrow evening, starting at 4:00 PM. It's at the chapel at Centennial Plaza. Our guest speaker is Franziska Troutman, and while I want to mention her, she's a co-founder of a company called Glass Half Full, and if any of the council members or the mayor has some time, she's gonna be talking about using glass crushed up with the sand to restore the coastal areas and what the effects are on that, and I thought it could be a compelling, a compelling presentation. And last thing, breakfast with the mayor tomorrow, we'll get up early and have a glass of, a cup of coffee or glass of orange juice with you, Mayor. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Glavine. For me, I just have a couple of things. What is our policy, or what do we do? I know when we repave roads or whatever, we, after they've cured or whatever, a certain amount of time, we stripe them. What do we do as far as roads that haven't been restripped in years? Is that something that we have, that we go around and, and look for? I just had, I had somebody call me about it, and I don't pay a lot of attention to it, but, you know, guy said, for some people that can't see great at night, you know, having the striping, you know, fresh, and so I started looking around, and there's a lot of roads that the striping is basically non-existent in places. So is that something we do, or we hire a contractor to do, or what?
And I think we've worked with the county in a number of, you know, third-party kind of situations to do that. I know we have, I know Pops Ferry, in certain conditions, the striping, and that's a busy, you know, busy road, but yeah, no, we would kind of get that on a list and attack them.
Okay, yeah, maybe that's something we can do, and, you know, not, not hire a company, but maybe somebody can put a list of worst to first type deal like we did on the shape of our roads, just, you know, to freshen those up throughout the city. Second thing is, I know that we can't cancel the budget meeting for today, next week we're gonna have one, and is that gonna be prior to or after the meeting?
After.
After, so that, so as soon as the meeting ends, we'll have a five-minute break and then go into a budget workshop?
I mean, that's really a council meeting, so that kind of is up to you all if you want to change the time.
What's that? I'm sorry?
You, if you want to change the time, it's a council-called meeting.
Is everyone good with after the regular meeting?
This is perfect.
Yeah, okay, we're good.
And on striping, I just wanted to add that the capital project budget, the capital budget that you're gonna approve, I think, for Public Works includes a new striping machine.
Okay, good deal. And, and then after the meeting, I just need to speak to you and then Jerry for a couple of seconds about a couple of things. And then I had someone else ask me, Amtrak, what's the status? Do we have like a start date when they're gonna start dropping and picking up passengers or anything like that?
I think from the council, I mean, from the Senator Walker's office, I think at the end of the year is what the target is.
Okay, yeah, they were just asking, they said that they seen the train stop there several times, and they were wondering if they were gearing up, getting ready to start accepting passengers and dropping people off and stuff.
Goal was at the end of the year, but I'll get an update on that.
Okay, yeah, just had that question, and I didn't know an answer, so.
They were running the tracks to make sure that everything was smooth.
Okay.
They came multiple trips through here, they'd stop and go, stop and go.
Good deal, all right. That's all that I have, so that will conclude President, Council's report, we'll now go to the public agenda, citizens' comments. Each citizen will have three minutes to speak when you, if you want to speak, when you come forward, please sign in at the table with your name and address, and state your name and address to us as well. It'd be a total allotted time of forty-five minutes. Do I have anyone on my left and your right that would like to speak? My left, your right. All right, anyone on my right, your left? Anyone in the back of the room? All right, no citizens' comments, so we will close that portion of the meeting, and we will move to our policy agenda. Gary, if you'll read ordinance A.
Ordinance amending sections 10521 and 10522 relating to the birthing rates for the Small Craft Harbor, Point Cadet Marina, Sherman Kane and Bat Bay Fishing Dock, and Biloxi Commercial Fishing Dock.
So moved.
All right, we have a first and a second, that's a first reading, so we'll move to item B.
Ordinance to amend sections 10512 pertaining to the purchase of firearm by retired officers and next of kin for officers killed in the line of duty.
So moved.
All right, that's also a first reading, so we'll move to the, I'm sorry, that's the first by Mr., yeah, Tisdale and Demming, I'm sorry. Item C?
Ordinance to amend sections 10512 unauthorized commercial solicitation and use of harbor facilities, and 105214, the Point Cadet Marina and the Biloxi Small Craft Harbor birthing rate schedule.
That was moved by Mr. Lawrence and seconded by Mr. Tisdale, any discussion?
Mike, can you explain exactly what we doing here, what happened, that we created this ordinance?
This particular ordinance is, the intent of it is, when a, I'll give you, for instance, a charter boat in Gulfport advertises they'll, they'll take a tour group out and we'll pick you up in Biloxi, and they motor over and pick up their tours, pick up their passengers in Biloxi, that's unauthorized, and that's what we're trying to put it into. Does that answer your question?
So you have to have a boat in Biloxi?
Correct, if you're gonna, if you're gonna.
Can you advertise in a harbor, or you can't?
You gotta be, if you're gonna solicit business, you have to be on a license to do business in Biloxi.
All right. Okay, thank you.
All right, Mr. Tisdale?
Nothing to add, thank you.
Any other discussion? All right, I'll call for the question, all in favor? Seven, zero. Now move to the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
All right, I have a first by Mr. Lawrence, second by Mr. Guines, we'll start at my left, Mr. Lawrence, any discussion?
Yeah, no, Kate, you asked him, let's go make some money for the watershed management, what is that, the watershed management?
Basically, a watershed management plan takes a look at, will be the entire limits of our city, and it'll break down our drainage into watershed basins, and look at flooding problems within each basin. So sometimes when we do a project, we do a project in a certain neighborhood, we might fix a drainage problem over here, but further downstream, it's gonna cause another problem. So basically, what this will do is, it's gonna look at the whole watershed approach.
And that's all handled by engineers?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, okay, so you?
Yes, yes, my department's gonna be running this. It's really important, especially like when we get out in Wool Market, because there's so much elevation changes, so what you do upstream really impacts downstream a lot, and vice versa, really. So it's kind of to help us look at those drainage issues that we've been having in Wool Market that we're having trouble fixing.
That's good. That's like you said, that's in Wool Market, it looks like gradient drive, but it's really not.
Yeah.
It rains, and that's very quick.
Yes, exactly.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And on, Mike, on L, the llama is, are we gonna, is?
That's the recognition of the funding for the Gomesa project to dredge Egan's Bayou, just recognizing the money.
So do we have a starting date?
The next thing that would happen is that we create it, I think there already is a capital project, there's already a capital project, we create, the project is created, we would put the money in the project, and we would begin the process of soliciting companies to do the work.
Okay, so we don't, we don't have a starting date, we just entered motion and done it? I know it's, it's something we've been trying to get done for a long time.
We've got one permit that we'll still have to get, so I'm guessing probably six months.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else?
That's it.
Whoa, only two?
I have none.
We're not, we're not coming back, Mr. Lawrence, you sure?
I have none.
Okay, let's see, A?
All right, Mr. Guines has none, Ms. Newman, Mr. Demming? Mr. Tisdale?
Yeah, on item F, just food for thought, this is city property on the corner of Kivett and Division, I'm thinking that's, it's a nice piece of property, it's about an acre and a third, and if we, if we expect some construction, I would assume, but if, if we don't see any construction in a certain amount of time, maybe two years or whatever, might we consider clawback? A clawback close in there? I mean, we want to encourage growth, but we don't want people to purchase the property and then just sit on it. I don't know that we need to do that here, but I'm just thinking for future sales or purchases.
The Harrison County Development Commission does that on the property that it sells, and I find, they find it very useful to make sure that projects, the applicants can keep, keep, keep moving forward.
Right, I think it's a little late, I think, to do it on this property, I would imagine, but I'm thinking, in the, in the future, I just don't want to see, I just don't want this to happen to what, what happened downtown in Biloxi for a while, with folks who've inherited property and just sit on it, and expect it to, you know, flip it and make a ton of money, and all it does is deteriorate, and then we gotta live with that. So maybe it's something we want to look at in the future. Thank you, that concludes my comments.
All right, Mr. Glavine, any comments?
I have none.
All right, and I have none either, so I will ask for a vote, all in favor? Seven, zero. Any exceptions?
No.
No exceptions. All right, we'll now move to code enforcement's. Mr. Creel?
Item A on the agenda, Luke Bowie Estate and Mui Nguyen, 223 Coon Street, that case has been resolved. Item B, Joseph and Sean Donaldson, 336 Stone Circle, that case has been resolved. Item C, Extended Stay LLC, 590 Beach Boulevard, this property's still in violation.
All right, is there anyone here to speak on behalf of or against Extended Stay LLC? Anyone here to speak on behalf or against? All right, if not, this case is closed. Next.
Item D, Johnny Granberry Estate, 235 Hoxey Street, I spoke with the owner this morning, and they have completed a majority of what we asked them to do, there is one car there that's gonna be towed before the month is out, I told them I would ask for thirty days in order to give them time to get it removed.
I made that motion.
Second. We have a first by Mr. Lawrence, a second by Mr. Tisdale, all in favor? Six, zero. All right, next item?
Item E, William Russell Heron, 384 Park Drive, this property's still in violation.
All right, Mr. Heron, you can come forward if you will, please sign your name and address. You can just tell us what, what, what you've done, or how long it's gonna, you think it's gonna take you to complete, or what's required to be done?
I'd say it's ninety percent done right now. There's a few things left that I need to move out of the yard, and my trucks have broke down for a couple weeks, and I don't know what's wrong with everybody, it's about a year, a year and a half after they get.
Speak it, please speak into the microphone.
My trucks broke down a couple weeks, I got a couple more things to move in the yard, but it's mostly done right now. And a few more things to throw away, I've got some updated pictures I took right before that the house today.
Okay, all right. Whose ward is this in? All right, Mr. Creel? Is there? Hart, Hart, Hart Drive?
This, this house has been a problem property for years. When I first started here, Mr. Heron's father was living in the house, and we were constantly having to bring it before code enforcement to remove junk vehicles and other things out of it. The problem with it right now, it had some sheds in the back, Mr. Heron did take down one shed. The problem is, the house is burned on the inside, there was a fire in here, and it destroyed just about all of the inside. It has no utilities running to it, and it, it really needs to be demolished. We've given him time to do something on the house, but it's, it's in bad shape.
So is it just the interior of the house, or the exterior?
It's good, well, you can see the pictures, you can see the.
Ms. Newman? Do you want to give an extension, or?
I'm sorry. Before, before y'all, we were bringing it to you for a shed in the rear that was in really bad shape, and he took that shed down, but then the fire happened, and they're living in there with no utilities, and that's a code violation, you can't do that.
Okay.
A while, it's a, this fire, I would say, happened probably three months ago, it might even be longer than that. But what, what drew our attention to it was the, the junk that was in the yard, and a lot of that has been, been removed from the front, the backyard still looks bad, I don't know if we had pictures up there of what's in the, in the, in the back, but again, this has been a problem property for a long time. again, this has been a problem property for a long time.
Uh, seven, so the house is still good. That house is okay. We're better than that room burned and a little bit on the side. Right. I'm not being silly with that because it's something that I've not fixed yet. And I haven't worked on it, but it's true.
Well.
There's nothing to be done, anything on the inside, but I can start on it.
If you don't have utilities on a house, then it's a code violation to be living in it. My code officers say that somebody is living in the house. But, uh, there's no way that the electricity or anything would be hooked back up to it in the condition that it's in right now. So it's got to get to a, a level where it's safe for even utilities can be hooked back up to it. Now, if he's serious about fixing it and the council wants to give him more time, then what we could do is give a temporary pole out in the yard, temporary electric pole, to give him some power to do that. But, uh, I would be really surprised if it gets repaired. So it's whatever the council wants to do. We can, we can do that. The power company, the, the power company, in order for power to be disconnected to anything, we have to show that it is an immediate life safety issue. They will not disconnect power for code enforcement purposes unless life safety is an issue. It's difficult to do that on a temporary pole. And, and what we tend to find out is that if you put a temporary pole out there, that the occupant will run an extension cord and provide electricity to the inside of the house. We can check on that. Yes, we'll continue to check on that. If the council wants to give him time, then, then we'll keep an eye on it and make sure he's doing what he's supposed to be doing.
I'll, I'll second that. Um, sir, is your intention to fix the house or to tear the house down? Okay, so I'll make a second and I'll ask you also, get the yard cleaned up, but secure the house to where people can't come in, in and out of the house. So any windows that are busted out or anything, get those boarded up and I'll second for 60 days. But after 60 days, if this isn't done, we will close this case. Mr. Tisdale?
Jerry, do you know, I'm, I'm wondering if this house is visible from Atkinson Road?
Yes, sir, it is.
I think it is. And if I remember, this has been going on for a number of years. I want to say three or four years back, we had a similar instance I have from what you mentioned earlier. I think this might have been his father's property.
It was, yes, sir.
Okay. And at that time, it was in poor repair. I think we might have, it might have come before us maybe twice, maybe more than that. I just remember this is a chronic issue that's gone back for a number of years and the fact that there's no power, um, concerns me. That's all. I just wanted to be sure it was the house that I was thinking of. Thank you.
One question. Do you live on a property? Do you live on it? Nobody lives on a property. Okay, so you say what, in a shed?
Right, there, there's a closure.
You said nobody lives in a house that burned and you said it's somebody living in a house that burned.
Nobody's living in the house.
All right, we have a, a motion for 60 days. Any other discussion? Mr. Heron, we're, we're going to look for progress and, and, you know, I just think it's a little, uh, quick. I understand the issue with the, the junky, the stuff in the yard, but I think that and the house, I think pushing a house down 90 days after it caught fires a little quick. We could look at this as two different cases, actually. The stuff in the yard and the house separate. I just think 90 days is a little quick to push a house down. Most people don't do repairs that quick on, on, um, on, but please show us progress and we'll give you leniency, but without progress, we'll close the case. Call for a vote, all in favor of 60 days? All opposed? Six in favor, Mr. Tisdale opposed.
Item F, George J. Jimenez Jr., 354 Holly Street. This property is still in violation. That's not it. That's, that's Forest.
What, what's the violation?
This is the wrong property.
Yeah, that looks kind of clean there.
This is Sarah Lou's property here that you're looking at. It's one of the next cases.
You said George Jimenez, so he sold it to her?
I'm sorry?
You said it's Sarah Lou.
No, 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 she's further down, uh, the list. This is 354 Holly Street is what we're looking at.
Is this the, the pictures are not correct though, is that right?
It's 367 Forest that you're looking at.
Oh, okay.
Is this property still in violation?
It is, yes.
All right, is there anyone here to speak on behalf or against, um, George J. Jimenez Jr.?
Are they still on the property, Jerry, you know?
Still in their name, yes, sir.
Yeah, because I know he passed away and they all moved.
No.
That's going in the opposite direction?
That's a car for sale.
This is a car that's supposed to be removed, the one I told you about earlier.
All right.
On Jimenez property, did you actually talk to anybody?
On the, on the Jimenez? It's just an overgrown lot. It's a, I've got pictures of it here. It's a overgrown, there's no structures on it or anything. This is it. I'd be glad to pass him if the council was to look at it.
Mr. Lawrence, is this in your ward?
Yes.
This is Holly Street, is your ward?
That's a line between me and Felix is right there.
Yeah, it, what do you think about those pictures?
I haven't seen them.
Okay.
I think you could get them to cut it if anybody can talk to them. Maybe they always kept that property pretty clean.
The next property is this one.
It, it does look a lot like Cedar, Cedar Lake Road though. It, it looks good.
Have you ever had, yeah, have you talked to anybody?
There, uh, nothing in the file other than where we set the notices, Mr. Lawrence. But I've not had any conversation with anybody about cutting it.
Yeah, because they always kept that line pretty, pretty, pretty cut, huh?
I'm not sure what the problem is this time.
I mean, if we've got somebody we can talk to, yeah, we can give it some time. That's just cutting the grass, that's all it is.
Well, I mean, even if the, if the council approves this, we still have to go get quotes to get it done and that would give time to talk to them. And if they get it cut before we cut it, then nothing happens.
Yeah. What, what little I know about it is kind of hit and miss. I mean, sometime they get it, sometime we get it. So I think we just close it, in my opinion.
Close it?
All right, we'll do that. We just, uh, try to get in touch with them, get them to cut it. We're just moving like it is.
Case closed. Next item?
All right, item, uh, G is Larry Jones Jr., 13061 Hudson Crone Road. This property is still in violation.
Is this like, is this a fire?
It was, yes.
So this is, this is the fire, um, that happened like, th- this is a, um, I guess a, a motor home or a travel trailer, something to that extent? Okay, and so if we close this today, they'll have like 30 days to clean it up prior to anything?
At least, any, anytime that we have to.
Uh, this is new, this is a new section of my ward. I've tried to get by there. I'd like to give them 60 days and let me, let me get, let me get a chance to talk to them. Mr. Barrett knows him a little bit too. Him and I have had a couple of discussions, but, uh, he sounds like he would be a reasonable person to clean up his property.
Okay, we have no objection.
Yeah, okay, we have a motion for 60 days. I'll second that, all in favor? All right. Next item?
Uh, item H, Dora D. Kettley, 367 Belvedere Circle. That case has been resolved. Item I, Zal Lapin, 1633 Pringle Circle. That case has been resolved. Item J, Cleo Pearson, 275 Ebony Lane and 277 Ebony Lane Units A and B. This property is still in violation.
All right, do I have anyone here to speak on behalf or against Cleo Pearson?
Okay, I have some more information on this one.
Okay.
These are two units that are in really bad shape and the owner has hired, uh, Nick Ladner to tear these down. He came in, uh, yesterday and spoke with me about getting the permit to go ahead and do it. So, uh, the owner is going to, supposedly going to take care of this.
So do we close the case or?
If you go ahead, if you go ahead and vote to approve it, then if something comes up and it's awesome.
If they don't do it, then we will, okay?
And still go ahead.
And I'll second that. We need to, we need to close that one.
Case closed, next item?
Okay. Item K, Sophia L. Pham, 367 Forest Avenue. Although part of this property has been mowed, the back part has not been mowed, so it's still in violation.
Do I have anyone?
I'm sorry?
Your girlfriend, she sold it to, that was Sarah Lou owned that property, we had so much trouble with.
I got an email from her today telling me that everything was taken care of and, uh...
It's not.
No, uh, if you look in the back, they, they cut the front part of it, but in that back area, back there, they didn't cut any of that along the back property line, so it's still in violation.
Yeah, make it, make sure they cut it, we're going to cut it.
All right, anyone here to speak on behalf or against David and Karen Prainer?
Uh, no, this is.
I'm sorry?
Sophia Pham.
All right, if not, this case is closed. Next item?
Item L, David M. and Karen J. Prainer. This is 317 Kensington Drive and this property is still in violation.
Is there anyone here to speak on behalf or against David and Karen Prainer? Anyone here to speak on behalf or against David and Karen Prainer?
There's actually a tree down on this property that's been down for a while. It, it appears that it was cut in the past, but, uh, it still hadn't quite been cleaned up yet, so, uh, we need the council's approval to go in and finish cleaning it up.
I'm surprised that much hasn't called me a mic. Every time you turn around, they call us about something on Kensington.
And, and we put the.
They got a bad piece of property, you know?
Yes, sir. And we put the sign up, Mr. Lawrence, too, in addition to notifying them by mail, so I'm not sure what the reason is.
All right. If no one's here on behalf or against, we will close this case. Next item?
Item M, Annette F. and Darren C. Salick, 208 Hoxsey Street. That case has been resolved. Item N, James R. Stringer, 8162 Jack Graves Road. This property is still in violation, but I met them out in the lobby as we were coming in, uh, and they showed me an, um, proposal where they've hired somebody to take care of the property and I told them I would ask for 30 days.
Is this, is this the property that's on the corner of Jim Byrd and Jack Graves?
I believe it is, yes, sir.
Okay.
I'll second it.
I'll, I'll make a motion. You make a motion already?
I do.
Okay, Mr. Lawrence first, Mr. Tisdale second. All in favor? Seven zero. Next item?
Okay. Item O, Ingrid C. Sullivan Estate, 1660 Sunset Boulevard. This case has been resolved. Item P, Maria Tran, 302 Oak Street. That case has been resolved.
All right, thank you. We'll now move to the routine agenda. Do I have a motion?
Second.
First by Mr. Lawrence, second by Mr. Tisdale. Discussion?
Yeah, Walt, with the latest, with the big check we got today.
Good afternoon, council. Currently, NEMA does not have any money in the Mississippi PA website. We do not have a council adocket for the infrastructure program this week, uh, and they will not give us our next advance in reimbursement until we make payments on the pay apps.
So we holding it up or they are?
They're not holding it up.
So we are, who's, who, we not making a payment?
We don't have any infrastructure pay apps on a docket. There's no docket to date.
All right, so we behind on that now?
We have, we have money to pay the next pay app, which hopefully will make the third, uh, council meeting next week. And we have enough money to make the next month's payment. They won't give us the next advance until we make the July payment.
What's the amount, yes, for July?
One million combined. So that's how the system works. You got to make the payment, then you get the advance and reimbursement.
Any particular reason we hadn't made the payment?
They had paid the pay up. They were submitted to pay up enough time for pay.
They could.
Once a month anyhow.
Yeah, we do it once a month. It was in time to make today's docket. The decision was made not to have a docket.
All right, you're 60 days ahead right this moment?
Yes, sir.
Okay, you anticipating another million, two million, three in September?
Yes.
So that's what we anticipate, as soon as we cut that check, then we need, we're anticipating 60 days, so you'll have whatever we're going to have in August and September ahead.
That's right. We will stay fairly close to 60 days advance, but it takes them time to process and they won't process until they see that we made payment on a pay application. So to stay 60 days advance, if you delay it or you don't make it on a certain day, then it just extends the time before you get your next reimbursement.
Oh, we're going to have to pay for, pay it next month? I mean, next week?
Yeah, everybody knows that on the third, third week or the second week, second meeting, yeah, you got 11 days in front of that meeting in order to pass through, uh, contracts and accounts payable. If they miss that, then they're going to, you know, we're going to wait till the next monthly meeting. You do this on those, on infrastructure payments, once a month per vendor. And the, the schedule is published and it, and everybody knows that. They don't get the, you get it to, uh, to contracts and then accounts payable in time, you're going to have to wait. But we're 60 days ahead. That's a, that's a true statement.
All right, well, I was just wondering, that's the first time we went through this?
No, it's not the first time, but it, it basically, the timing is what Paul, what Walter's, you know, it, uh, talking, addressing. They know, you know, you need to get your stuff for the prior weeks to be paid on this docket on the second, uh, meeting or usually the third week.
So you just didn't make the docket or we didn't put it on for a reason?
They didn't pro- provide the data in order to move it forward.
Yeah, because if something had happened, I mean, you know, I'm just trying to figure that out, that's all. We don't want to be behind.
No, we're not behind.
Well, I mean, we'd be.
They're behind if they don't pro- provide the, the data in order to make, you know, make the docket so we can make the payment. Once a month, we make these, uh, payments.
All right. That didn't get the answer, but that's all right. Nice, nice dance, huh?
All right, any other discussion?
Thank you.
All right, if not, I'll call for the question. All in favor? Seven zero. Do I have a motion to adjourn? First by Mr. Tisdale, second by Mr. Lawrence, all in.